Good evening and welcome to the March 4th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. If everybody will rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We've got a few things going on here. We have no public hearings this evening. Any announcements from the board? Duane, anything?
Nothing.
Gary?
I know. Thanks.
And John?
I just wanted to mention that there's a silent auction at the Waterboro Public Library, April 1st through April 13th.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'm all set. Good evening.
Want your next Wednesday at the Snuggable Club put on the...
The 12th.
Yeah, April 12th. Yeah, March 12th.
What time is that?
Noon time. I believe it's gonna be a chicken dinner, but I won't guarantee it till you get there. There'll be something to eat.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda? We're gonna move health tequilas renewal liquor license up under old business, correct?
Correct.
So there would be a discuss vote, health tequila's renewal liquor license. And somebody would make a motion to move that.
So move...
All those in favor? Thank you. There are no appointments tonight. Any public comment? We have the correspondence, financial reports, CMP notice, tree care program, request for zone change letter from Steve Everett. We'll end up passing that on to the...
Planning board.
Planning board. And the budget memo from the town administrator, which I think everybody now has a book, And if anybody needs a copy of that, please let us know. Reports of staff initiatives, selectmen's reports, anything, John?
Nothing.
Gary?
No.
Duane?
I believe I do.
I'm all set, so we'll toss it over to you, man.
So obviously you just talked about the submitted FY '26 budget, hard copies there. It's on your Google Drive as well. You have expense budget and projected revenue budget. Since we submitted the budget, we did not anticipate replacing the boiler in the old town hall with the cost that we're gonna be taking out of the emergency fund. I would suggest that we're gonna add $50,000 to the emergency fund, which would cover the amount that we're... And a little bit to the emergency fund for FY '26. I did reach out to Chairman Burrows, and he reached out to his committee members. We've got a majority from them that support that movement as well. That would give us an FY '26, approximately $75,000 in that account, because we're gonna draw from that to the tune of about $35,000 to $38,000 in current year to replace that boiler. We reached out to three companies. I did reach out to Jeff McDonald as well. He refused. He's not interested. He doesn't do that now at this point or interested in it. But we do have a couple estimates, and we're moving forward with that, and hopefully we'll have that replaced within a week or so.
When are we gonna replace the library boiler?
We did that a couple years ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, let's knock on wood. We don't have to do that one again yet.
Yeah, okay.
That was one that was under a warranty, then they got it warranted.
Yep. So you had mentioned that we gotta buy two boilers to make up the difference...
So the boiler that's in there now is almost tripled, oversized for the BTUs that we put out. Owen, we got a quote from brochure clubbing, and he thinks we can put two smaller boilers in there and be more sufficient. There's a lot of things wrong with the one that's in there now, besides it having a being cracked. The piping is undersized for it, so it's straining more, constantly water running through it. We're burning about $6 an hour, he said. One of their reps said. So the two boilers will both feed off each other. One will run, and one won't run as much, and we're gonna cut that cost to about $3 an hour.
Okay.
How long's the curve for boiler?
The burner says 83 on it, so about... Yeah, it serves its purpose.
I think the furnace was put in when the old building was put back on the foundation, which was mid-'70s, and then they put a new boiler in on top.
Guess it doesn't... Doesn't notice anything?
In talking to Public Works, I almost think Van Voglio patched that back in the '90s. As you said, there's a crack, an old crack that has been patched and whatnot, but Van did something to it to get it by and was gonna...
It's got a couple of accidents, huh?
Yeah, so...
Right now, we're sucked up...
We got 30 extra years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Van's got us 30 years out of that, so...
We've sucked up about 8 gallons of water from the last two days.
Oh, wow.
Off the floor.
All right.
In five years, it's gonna pay for itself and save the old heckle.
Just a few more things for you. FD staffing update, we still have no per diem applicants since our last meeting. We continue to fill some shifts with the career staff as available. Public Works garage updates. Jason and I continue to communicate with Owens while he's been working on the site planning for this facility. We're optimistic for... We were hoping for this a couple weeks out to be with planning board, but I'm assuming it might be April 2nd meeting now. The architect, Dave Graham, continue to work on the drawings. Engineering testing will be completed later on this month. Jason's meeting with electrical engineers is Friday. Current goal is to submit plans to the planning board, obviously early March, and we're still on target, hopefully, for distribution of the bid documents. We are working with financing from the local bank, so we're gonna continue to pursue that. Due to the time restrictions and some other issues, we may not be able to utilize the USA, USDA rural loan program, and we need to hopefully continue our process and hopefully not get met with the tariffs. Lastly, we talked to Owens extensively about a generator, which we're going to delete from the bid specs and not require that on that, because we've located in our work progress in this project, we estimate that could be anywhere from $60,000 to $80,000 for a generator. We actually located a used one that we're moving, we're looking to pursue to purchase. It's a used Cummings Diesel with 312 hours on it, electrician that we've used quite a while, and they're looking to get $12,000 for this. We believe that this is a sufficient size to power the new building, the salt shed, and the current building we have. So if all goes as well planned, we'll purchase that unit, and we anticipate at least 10 years probably out of that. And that will save us a significant amount of money. And I'll be out of the office on Thursday.
Where'd you find that out? Where'd you find the generator, man?
Can't tell you. On TV. Can't tell you on TV, because somebody else may go do it.
Are the electricians we use the supplier?
Okay, dude.
Anything else, man?
That's it.
Any questions for man?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to new business discuss vote on action item from correspondence from Steve Everett. And if you've read that letter, he's suggesting that we do away with the F and A zone and combine it with the A and R zone. So my suggestion is, is that we move this to the planning board.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yep.
Then that's all I'll do. I'll make the motion. We take this request from... Was it Steve?
Steve Everett.
Steve Everett.
Steve Everett.
And forward it to the planning board.
Yeah.
I second that.
Okay.
I got a comment on it before you vote.
Yep.
Just, I guess I'm mixed feelings, because housing developments in the F and A means town roads and town road improvements, and it's gonna be very costly to the town to get into these F and A pieces. And these are all, if you're gonna have a housing development with eight to 10 houses, they're gonna become town roads.
Not necessarily.
Well, I... Yes. Unless shoe string lots like we got up on the Clarks Bridge Road. That should've been an internal road, should've been a town road from Route 5 to the Clarks Bridge Road, not so many entrances.
Any other discussion? All those in favor moving it to the planning board? All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to discuss vote to sign the abatement for assessor for MAP, Post 007, Mark 52A38. So moved. Any discussion? All those in favor? Discuss possible vote on proposed municipal budget. My suggestion is, is that we take the budget book back, mark it up, whatever you think, whatever cuts you wanna make, and we'll spend...
We could like a workshop on it?
Yeah, well, we'll spend... We have to vote on it.
Vote on it.
Accept it. So we'll step by step go through at the next meeting. It's gonna be approved by April...
2nd.
2nd, right?
April 1st.
So if we don't finish next week or the next meeting, we'll have to schedule a special meeting.
Okay.
Old business. We've moved health tequila's renewal liquor license up, so discuss vote. I think everything has been done now, right?
Correct.
So what is your pleasure then?
We have letters from the Sheriff's Department and all that. I'll make the motion that we accept the renewal license of tequila.
Second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Other business discuss vote to accept the minutes of February 18th meeting. So moved. There's only two of us that were here, so we probably... We'll probably have to deal with that at the next meeting.
Yes.
So because Gary and John were here. So let's push that to the next meeting.
11:00 A. the next.
Could assign the abatement.
Pending reaction, we've... Decisions, we move that up. Weeks' action list, discussions of agenda items. Anybody can think of anything, but we probably will keep the next meeting...
For the budget.
For the budget, right? So we won't add a lot to that, and we'll walk through the budget to be presented to the voters. I just needed signatures, the abatements. And if nothing else, I entertain a...
I got one thing budget for everybody to think about, and it's kind of...
Oh, Jesus.
I don't know how to stat it, but your town manager that's gonna start in July, I feel should've had probably a 10% increase in pay to become the town manager. And I also feel that the selectmen should have a minimum of a 10% increase in pay becoming councilman.
Okay.
And the main reason on the 10%, if something happens to Matt, we ain't got money enough to hire the town manager. There is not money enough in that budget, because you've got two positions that's being paid about one.
So...
And we need to start bumping that up just a little bit. If something, somewhere happens, we get something in the giddy to do it. And the other thing is, I've been here 22 or 23 years, never seen an increase in pay. Seen them take it away once, but not take it and increase it, but just to get the new board kind of up to date to know what the surrounding towns are paying. You know, we've never taken a pay in it. There's one or two ways, I guess, to do it. I thought about it and done a little research on it, but everybody's gonna get a 3%, I believe, raise in that budget. You could do that for two or three years and get it up somewhere near where the other towns are, or do it all in one year, so...
Well, you could make that proposal next...
Yeah, but I wanted everybody to think about it.
Do away with the contract deputy. There's your pay raise.
One or both of them.
Both of them. Well, it's being held in the budget right now, but we'll have that discussion next week.
It's in the county budget at the same time.
Yeah, yes.
And hopefully something happens there.
Yeah, I think they're gonna... They're gonna potentially vote to eliminate contracts, so... But anyway, if nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So...
Second. All those in favor? Thank you, and good night. Thank you, and good night.